I'm gonna call this meeting of New Hanover County Board of Education to order. If anyone would please stand for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and...
Why is it like up here?
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come today gathered together to look at the best ways that we can serve the children of New Hanover County. We ask for your blessings on all that we do here today. Guide our discussion, that it may be filled with understanding, that we may be looking out for those things which we can do, both as a board and as individuals, to serve the needs of all our children. We pray also for those who are serving in our armed forces, serving with our law enforcement groups, with our fire departments, that you would watch over them, keep them safe, watch over their families when they are away, that they will all be protected and guided in your light. Tonight, we say a special prayer for our superintendent who suffered an injury this past weekend. May your blessings be upon him, that he may make a quick and full recovery and be able to be back to join us. These things we pray in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn of the light, what so proudly we hailed, as the twilight gleaming, whose bright stripes stole the headward sight? All the rivers seemed vast, but so gallantly streaming, and the sun was red, the stars were singing, gave proof to the night, that the flag was still there. Oh, say, the best stars may go, when they are away, for the land of the free and the home of the brave.
Principal Ron Valice and Instructor Erin Saylor. I apologize if I mispronounced it. If they'd like to introduce themselves, please.
I'm Zaraya Keaton, I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Aleah Butler, and I'm in eighth grade.
Hi, my name is Iris Fielder, and I'm in seventh grade.
And I would like to announce that the posting of the colors were by the John T. Hargardt High School Naval Junior ROTC, Principal Steve Sullivan, Instructor Commander Steve, David, I'm sorry, Everett, and Staff Sergeant Richard Gichardo. And if you would announce besides your name, your grade, and your rank.
Hi, my name is Kelsey Robertson, I'm a Cadet Petty Officer Third Class, and I'm a Rising Junior.
Hi, I'm Abby Fairchild, I'm a Rising Junior, and I'm a Cadet Petty Officer First Class.
My name's Mark Apiza, I'm Lieutenant J.G., and I'm a Rising Senior.
My name is Zeus Barrios, I'm a Rising Junior, and I'm a Cadet Petty Officer Second Class.
Ms. Adams, would you call the roll, please?
Edward B. Higgins.
Here.
Jeanette S. Nichols.
Here.
Veezy Apiza.
Here.
Donald S. Page.
Here.
Ruth Pisha.
Here.
David L. Worth.
Next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Dr. Holliday, are you gonna speak to the changes, or do I?
Things we like.
There is an addition to the, under information, Item A, Appendix F, Policy 3610 Purchasing Administration, will be added. We're going to move the presentation by Ms. Hines' classroom students to, right after the approval of the minutes, because they're young and they need to get home. And because the superintendent could not be with us tonight, we are going to delete under Administrative Reports, where am I? Administrative Reports, Item Eight, we're gonna delete Item A, the evaluation, tonight. Any other additions, changes anybody needs, or knows?
Move for adoption of the revisions to the agenda.
I have a motion, do I hear second? Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is now adopted. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. I'm gonna take all three together unless somebody wants to speak otherwise. The minutes of the interim meeting of February twentieth, two thousand eighteen, the redistricting work session minutes of April thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, and the minutes for April third and May one, the regular meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion to accept those minutes?
Don't move.
Have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, they are adopted. Next item is Ms. Hines' classroom presentation, so I will...
Good evening, we are delighted to join you and grateful that we can go early so we can make it to bed on time. Ms. Hines will introduce her students. They entered her classroom as four-year-olds, and some have turned five.
Here we have Ms. Doran, who has asleep, Mr. Tyler Williams, Mr. Elijah Thornton, Ms. Daniela Porzoza, and Mr. Charles D. Ditts. And we are gonna be singing our phonics song for you, and not only do they know their letters and letter sounds, they also know some final wish.
A is for apple, a-a-apple. B is for ball, b-b-ball. C is for cat, c-c-cat. D is for dog, d-d-dog. E is for elephant, e-e-elephant. F is for fish, f-f-fish. G is for gorilla, g-g-gorilla. H is for hat. A is for apple, a-a-apple. B is for ball, b-b-ball. C is for cat, c-c-cat. D is for dog, d-d-dog. E is for elephant, e-e-elephant. F is for fish, f-f-fish. G is for gorilla, g-g-gorilla. H is for hat, h-h-hat. I is for igloo, i-i-igloo. J is for juice, j-j-juice. K is for kangaroo, k-k-kangaroo. L is for lion, l-l-lion. M is for monkey, m-m-monkey. N is for no, n-n-no. O is for octopus, o-o-octopus. P is for pig, p-p-pig. Q is for question, q-q-question. R is for ring, r-r-ring. S is for sun, s-s-sun. T is for train, t-t-train. U is for umbrella, u-u-umbrella. V is for van, v-v-van. W is for watch, w-w-watch. X is for box, x-x-box. Y is for yellow, y-y-yellow. Z is for zoo, z-z-zoo. So many things for you to learn about, so many ways to sing your song. So many things for you to learn about, so many ways to sing your song.
Thank you.
Thank you for the entertainment. All right, next item on our agenda is our recognition of achievement. We have several things. Ms. Quinabon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone, we're so happy to see you here tonight. Our first recognition of the evening is very exciting. We will highlight one of our community partners, and this is the first one of our Greek letter organizations in the community. This year, Kappa Alpha Psi fraternity has been working with students at several of our schools. So at this time, I would like to invite the distinguished gentlemen of Kappa Alpha Psi fraternity, represented by Mr. Henry Jacobs and Mr. Derek Holland, who is the Pole Mark of the Wilmington Alumni Chapter. If you would please come forward and share the great things you've been doing in our schools.
In absence of Dr. Markley, Dr. Holliday, staff, Chairman Higgins, New Hanover County School Board, thank you for allowing us to be here. My name is Derek Holland, and I serve as the Pole Mark of the Wilmington Alumni Chapter of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated. We're glad to be able to be here, we thank you for allowing us to be here, and we're gonna share with you some of the things that we've done in the community as a partnership to the schools here and their families. Before we present some of the things that we've done, let me introduce a few of our brothers that are here tonight. First of all, we have Marshall Jones, Tim Best, James Frederick, Wayman Hyman, Henry Jacobs, and then I think I saw a brother come in that's behind in the room, Ron Valines, is he here?
Yep.
So these are our brothers.[1025.41][1025.41](applause) So this is just a few of our brothers that are here tonight. We have plenty of other brothers that were not able to come tonight, but we're gonna share some of the things that we've done, and I'm gonna allow one of our brothers, Brother Jacobs, to come and present those items.
Thank you, Brother Holland, but I think I'd rather have the introduction by the kids that just came up. A is for apple. K is for kappa. But thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to present some of the things that we do in the community, and particularly in the school system. I'm getting used to this here. Is it on? Our, our chapter in the fraternity, Wilmington Alumni Chapter of Kappa Alpha Psi began in nineteen forty-eight, Fe-February the fourteenth, nineteen forty-eight, and our very first Pole Mark was Dr. Leroy Upperman. And from there, we have been, we have been doing a lot of things in the community, and we are one of the oldest Greek lettered organizations incorporated, letter organizations in, in, in our Divine Nine system. Divine Nine includes eight other fraternities and sororities as well. The Wilmington Alumni Chapter of Kappa Psi, we are one of the, like I say, one of the oldest dedicated to the task of honorable achievement and community service, which means that we don't only self-serve ourselves, we provide services to the community as well. We got started in Indiana University in nineteen eleven by ten of our founders, who decided that what we wanted to do was, we wanted to get guys together, college men together, that were like-minded achievers, and shared the wealth of our knowledge and opportunities and, and our ability to be able to work with each other, with our community, by going into community and working with children and our, and our, and adults as well. Our international headquarters is in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, okay? Our Grand Pole Mark, our Grand Pole Mark serves up to about four years, and what he does, his name is Thomas Battle, and he works with the Department of Justice. He's a regional director of, when it comes to social relations, for the Department of Justice from Florida to Virginia. Many of our representatives, and I'm just giving you a brief overview of what we are about, many of our representatives you will see there include Travis Smiley, well, he's a member of our fraternity along, well, as well as Colin Kaepernick and Arthur Ashe and all of those folks, they are members of our fraternity. We provide training, we provide a lot of training. We provide training with the members of our fraternity, and every year, all the way up through college students as well as the adults, the alumni chapters. We are in the Middle Eastern Province, which means that we cover, our chapter is, we are divided into twelve provinces, and we are in the Middle Eastern Province, which includes North Carolina and Southwest Virginia. One of our projects that we have is the St. Jude Children's Hospital, Research Hospital. We have raised over four million dollars for the St. Jude Children's Hospital, and we continue to do so, and we are required by each one of our members to have a fundraiser, and one of our easiest fundraisers is to go to our local churches that we are a member of, and we seek sort of financial support for the St. Jude staff, and St. Jude Children's Hospital staff, regional area person comes in and helps us out, and that those churches send that money directly to them. We, and locally as well, we provide support to the community through holiday giving, the annual Thanksgiving, Christmas holiday fund drive, and we share with the community. What we do is work sometimes with the, all the schools that are selected by our chapter, and we get food and provide those to the families. We know, we do not meet the families unless they seek us out, but what we do, we work with the principals at the local school that we choose to work with during that, during that particular year, or one, several schools, and they will let us know if there are some people that would, they think would need support. So one of the things that we do is go out and get, get food for the holidays, and not particularly for a meal, but to sustain them for more than just one meal. And that is one of the photos that you see there, that we've been doing for years. We also, we also provide clothing and school supplies. We, over at DC Virgo, we have a place, a location in this building called the Kappa Corner. In that, in that Kappa Corner closet, what we have provided was clothes for male and female, personal hygiene items, school supplies, and anything that the teachers or the staff deemed necessary, that would be needed by the student, even shoes. All of this is brand-new stuff that we put in that closet for whatever kid needs it. And if the, if the supplies replenish, we replenish, so that they will be able to get something throughout the year, not just as a one-time occasion. And that, it had, was one of the visions that one of our brothers had, through a dream of his, that, that he was given this charge to make sure that this is done, and we supported it fully, and we've been doing it now for two years. We also, and that just, that's just one of the things that we do there. The, we provide also Godrite, a Godrite program, our Godrite program goes into the schools, we look for young males, we mentor them, it's mostly a youth mentoring, and it goes all the way through, through to graduating seniors. And that's done, and not just with our chapter, but with all the chapters in our fraternity across the United States. We have a Kappa Camp, which is a middle and high school educational enrichment summer camps that we provide the funds for, and at the same time, graduating seniors and freshmen in college, we pay tuition for them to go to another state for a two-week camp as well. The Kappa League, very same thing, is, and the Achievement Academy, that's for grad, grad school assistance and things of that nature. The Kappa, the C. Roger Wilson is a part of our training, and the Kappa League is another part of the leadership program. We have an annual scholarship program that we give money to for graduating senior, and what we do is, they send us a letter, speaking of the need for the financial support. They also, they are required to go to a four-year school, and, and being enrolled before they get the money. We used, we used to send the money, and as soon as they get the registri, we get the registration and everything and see the transcript, but now what we do is send it straight to the administration building, and you understand why. College students will, with thousands, a few thousand dollars, buy a lot of beer. So we make sure that it goes straight to the, goes straight to the administration, and it takes care of the tuition. Adult male presence at Gregory Elementary School, we meet and greet students arriving at school. We make sure that we have a black male presence at the schools that we choose for that particular year. This, at this time, we are in the rain or whatever, we are opening the doors to the kids that comes into the school, and we are greeting them and giving them some words of encouragement for their, their day. And at many of the other times, we also have those brothers that come back at the end of the day to help them get on the bus. So we want to make sure that we have a black male presence there at the school, and that, yes, we can get up and come there just as well as you, although we don't have to sit in a class. But we do. We have brothers that come in and the support with the reading and the learning experience, because we understand that you don't have teacher assistants in all the classes. So what we do is, we come in, we sit with, we sit with the student, and we read and help them comprehend, based on whatever level of learning that they, level of comprehension that they have. And what we like to do is not to seek out those that are doing well with it as well, but we like to seek out those students that have difficulty with comprehension, so that we can support them, because we found that some students are shy with learning, with the learning experience, because they don't want to be embarrassed, so they would like, we feel that, to come in and sit with a child, and sit with more than just one, and to help them understand will be, make it feel, make them feel more confident in challenges of reading and discussing what they read. That was at DC Virgo. This one here, this is the Kappa Closet that we have, and of course, we are showing our, a little vein there, so overlook that, we are showing the guys that are in the closet, more so than the clothes, but we have clothes, and we have the, have the supplies, and we have everything there. And these are some of the fellows that made sure that everything was, was in the closet, in that Kappa Corner closet. Those are a lot of the things that we do, and we also continue to do a lot, a lot of everything else. Wherever the need is, that's what we do. Whatever we can do financially, we try to support. If there is a family that has a need outside of what we are doing, we try to support. We seek the Department of Social Services to see if there's someone that they think that would need our support, we do it. We, we keep ourselves open to anyone that we know that is working in any of the particular schools, and we want to find out where can we fit in, and we do it. And that's one of the reasons why I be here, and I appreciate the opportunity to, to come in and let you know what we and let you know what we are about. We are small in numbers, but we are big in heart. And we continue to do so wherever we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
On behalf of the scoreboard, I want to thank you for all that your organization does. I know it enriches the lives of the kids you come in contact with. And that's, that's so important. So thank you.
Thank you, and you're welcome.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Will you folks be working with a lab school next year at Virgo?
Well, yes, we will.
Oh, good. Yes, glad to hear. Thank you.
Kappas, we appreciate you so much for what you do for us. Our next recognition is for a very special group of students who were selected this year to serve on the Superintendent Student Advisory Council. These students represented their schools and met with the superintendent and our board members quarterly to discuss topics of concern and provide valuable input on important district issues. So students, as I call your name, would you please come forward so that we may recognize you at this time? Representing Ashley High School, Elena Blackwelder. Ryan Dixon. And Farah Newton. From the Career Readiness Academy at Mosley, Henry Escalante. Thomas Giordano. And Destiny Sorato. From Haggard High School, Serenity McCain. Sonya Shaw. And Dylan Whaley. From Isaac Bear, Demi Edwards.
There she is.
Samantha Klein. And Johnny Moreno could not be here tonight. From Laney High School, Jayla Rogers could not be here tonight. She's one of our state golf champions. Garrett Smith. And Ashlyn Williams. From New Hanover High School, Jordan Fields. Max Hildress could not be here tonight, and Carl Rikannick. From Sea Tech High School, Lawrence Newkirk. Ava Payne. And Sage Ransom. And finally, from Wilmington Early College, Octavia Bro. Olivia Santo. And Emma Wilson. And if the families of these fine students are here, would you please stand? We congratulate you on raising such outstanding students.
Thank you.
And now we will recognize our Morehead Kane Scholarship winner. At this time, we will recognize Sonya Shaw of Haggard High School, who has been awarded the prestigious Morehead Kane Scholarship by UNC Chapel Hill. Ms. Shaw has served as the Vice President of the Student Council. She volunteers for Homes for Hope, an organization that rescues girls from human trafficking in India. She does this as a student. She's an award-winning singer, and she's highly ranked in the martial arts, so be careful, Mr. Hayes. And at Carolina, she plans to study finance and psychology. Congratulations, Sonya. If your parents are here, Mr. and Mrs. Shaw, would you please stand? Congratulations. Thank you, Sonya. We'll be expecting great things from you. Our next recognition is very rare and unique. The class of 2018 has attended more than 2,300 instructional hours during their time with us. And today, we will honor two Ashley High School students who have perfect attendance from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade. How you like that? So at this time, I will ask these outstanding Ashley Eagles to please come forward. Ms. Emily Nelson. And Ms. Taylor Long. If Emily and Taylor's parents are here, would you please stand? We know you had a lot to do with that. Congratulations. Next, we have some state tennis champions to recognize. We have another state championship team from New Hanover High School. Members from the men's tennis team captured the 3A doubles tennis championship. So at this time, New Hanover's just winning everything this year. I'd like to invite the tennis team to come forward with their coach, Griffin, Griffith Warren and Wesley Gaines. And that's, those are the tennis students. Griffith, Griffith and Wesley. There you are. And their coach is Mr. Kirk Schmidt. So to your parents, if you're here, would you please stand? Congratulations. Dr. Morgan and Athletic Director Keith Moore, you all are having just a phenomenal year, so congratulations. Our next recognition is for students who received top placement awards at the North Carolina Science Olympiad. So we'll begin by recognizing the following recipients whose first-place finish earned a $2,500 scholarship to North Carolina State University. From Isaac Bear, Grayson Seister. Ben Ladder could not be here with us tonight. From Laney High School, Priyanka Vedravu. And Cody Curran. From Roland Grace Middle School, Justin Gouam. There he is. And Sarthak Mishra. From Ashley High School, Savannah Kennedy. These are our STEM superstars. And Grayson Harris. From Isaac Bear, Tommy Esposito. Sophia Miller. Zane Dash. Wow. Zane, you are a tall man. Johnny Morales could not be here. Bailey Bordeaux. Kendall Chotnick. And Isaac Bear also had the Science Olympiad Coach of the Year. Is Mr. Brian Bishop here? I'm a big fan, Mr. Bishop. From Laney High School, Allison Carpenter. And Ben Akiri. And Laney won the Spirit Award. From Murray Middle School, Katie Barnello. And Mike Izzo. From Noble Middle School, Cooper Hildahl. And finally, Lindsey Nepper. If the parents of these Science Olympiads are here, would you please stand so we can recognize you? So thank you to you and the principals for these amazing, talented students. Our next recognition is for a young man also in the area of science. His science project was selected as a grand award winner at the North Carolina Science and Engineering Fair. As a result, he has been invited to compete in the Intel International Science and Engineering Fair in Pittsburgh. So at this time, I think he's already up there. The fabulous Zane Dash from Isaac Bear. So, Mr. Hayes, you want to get a group picture with those guys? These are all our science winners. If you went to your seat and you want to run up here, we'll wait on you. Okay. Thank you. We just have two more. The district recently held our annual elementary Battle of the Books competition. We had 23 teams compete for the title, but only one team prevailed. So we want to mention that Ogden Elementary and Parsley, Ogden came in second and Parsley came in third, but our winners were from the great Carolina Beach Elementary School. There's Mr. Hayes. So when I call your name with the Battle of the Books champions from Carolina Beach, please come forward and remain standing for a group picture with our board, Skylar Santucci. Michaela Baker-Gregg. Chloe Monk. Elena Boos. Alexa Crace. Can we read at the beat? He even wore his Battle of the Books t-shirt. Go Hunter. These students were led by their super librarian, Celeste Woodard. If the parents of these super readers are here, would you please stand so we can congratulate Mr. Hayes, that's your people, your school. Thank you all so much. And our last, our last recognition, I thank y'all for hanging in there with us. It's June, so we have a lot, but this is our last one. And it is for the winners of the My 17 poster contest. The students were asked to submit artwork for the anti-violence campaign in response to the tragedy in Parkland, Florida. This was a great idea from the Student Support Division. So the contest allowed our students to voice their concerns and opinions about school safety and expressing their support for the victims of that tragedy. So we want to congratulate the students from Noble Middle School for their winning designs. So Noble students, when I call your name, would you please come forward? And I think I see the principal there, Mr. Smith. Sky Mendoza. Becca Harris could not be here, and Jordan Martin. So Mr. Smith, we're going to have to ask you to come up here, ma'am. We just thank you for allowing your students to participate. And we thank Ms. Kristen Jackson, the Director of the Department, Dr. Holliday, it was a great idea. And thank you, Board, for this long recognition. I appreciate you standing up with me. Thank you, Mr. Higgins.
The next item on our agenda is the call to the audience. I would remind you, each member, each speaker is limited to three minutes. Every time does not permit dialogue between the Board and the community. While the Board welcomes residents to share their views, the Chairman retains the right to limit discussion on a particular topic when such comments become slanderous or personal in nature. Having said that, our first person that signed up is Sarah Jane.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, I appreciate you, your time tonight. Last week, I emailed each of you concerning serious issues for the year-round 10-month employees being changed to hourly employees being paid twice a month. I provided detailed information along with a month-by-month breakdown of the catastrophic effects of this payroll change. Hopefully, you've had time and opportunity to review this information carefully. Trust me, I understand it's a lot to process. And I don't want to review that information tonight, but I do need to add a little bit to it. At your February 6th Board meeting, in order to increase bus driver employment, this Board approved the following, quote, "Pay all 10-month, non-exempt employees every two weeks rather than once a month," unquote. The very next day, a memo from Jean Dubendorf was sent out saying the following, quote, "Last night, the Board of Ed approved for all 10-month, non-exempt employees to be moved to the semi-monthly, hourly schedule," unquote. In reading the minutes of the Board meeting, nowhere does it say that this Board had approved salaried employees to become hourly employees. I am in the eighteenth, my 18th year as a TA with New Hanover County School System. I love my job and I love my kids, and I would love to share with you how this payroll change is going to affect my life. I'm a single-income household. In order to make ends meet and keep this job I love so much, I tutor, I dog sit, I house sit, I babysit, and I sew. Yet I still live mostly paycheck to paycheck. This is what living paycheck to paycheck means in my world. It means budgeting must be done for all extra spending, such as traveling and entertainment. It means saving for such things as clothing, household needs, and seasonal changes in utility bills. Unexpected and irregular financial occurrences such as medical bills or car repairs can and do send my financial status into a tailspin. However, with the upcoming changes in payroll, all of that will change. In order to have been financially prepared for these changes, it would have taken me approximately two years of saving. We have been given three months or less. This payroll schedule does not provide regular paychecks and hence prohibits paying bills on a regular basis. At this time, I have no choice but to prepare to be evicted from my home by the end of October. Here's a question, why? Why is this change happening? 24 equal paychecks throughout the year is fine. It's the, it's the unequalness that is just life-changing. I'm not alone in being extremely concerned about this change to our ability to provide a living for ourselves. Sadly, most of my peers were not able to be here because they're working their second jobs. I honestly believe that this payroll plan and its effects on New Hanover County employees was not part of what this Board approved on February 6th. I do believe, however, that it is this Board's responsibility to change the change. I respectfully request that this Board examine the policy, its implementation, and its effects on the lives of so many employees who work so hard and make such a huge difference in the students' lives. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. Thanks for letting me brag a little bit about some of our EXO students. The New Hanover County Chapter of the NAACP is happy to announce that we've awarded $2,000 scholarships to, actually, it's to Isaac Bear graduates. The first one, Shay Webb, is the daughter of Tia Dobson. She currently serves as Assistant Chair of the New Hanover County EXO Program. She was a gold medal winner in last year's competition in the STEM Division, Diabetes Education. She graduated from Isaac Bear Early College and is now majoring in Clinical Research at UNCW. There she serves as UNCW Black Student Union Vice President, founder of Rhyme &amp; Reason, which is a poetry club, president of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Pi Nu Chapter, and is a member of the UNCW Gospel Choir. So we want to congratulate Shay Webb on her scholarship. The second scholarship winner is Katora Starks. She's the daughter of Mr., of Ms. Shanta and Mr. Kentrell Starks. She's a senior graduating at Isaac Bear. She's a gold medal winner in this year's competition in the Entrepreneurship Division, and she will attend UNC Pembroke this fall, majoring in Psychology and Leadership. She designed and implemented a mentoring and a student-building program for young women of color called Young Women of War. And her project for EXO was writing and presenting a business plan for going this organization. Some of her volunteer activities include working in hospice care and Salvation Army and the Children's Museum. So we want to congratulate our NAACP, New Hanover County Scholarship winners. And also, I have one other announcement from the New Hanover County NAACP. We will be inviting all candidates for the School Board to participate in a forum. It'll be held in September or October, and we're working on the date now, date and place, and those will be announced soon. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the, for the scholarships you're making available to our students.
Mr. Chair, Madam Chair, as well as the rest of the distinguished Board. Like I said, my name is Moses Darden, and I'm a representative for the Teamsters Union, North America's strongest union. So not only do we represent thousands of employees, classified employees throughout the country, as well as the state, classified employees include, of course, the bus drivers, cafeteria workers, maintenance, TAs, as well as other support staff. The reason I'm coming for you this evening is to talk about some of the issues that we have here in New Hanover County schools in regards to, it's going to be specific about bus drivers today. As you are well aware, there is a bus driver shortage, not only, you know, throughout the state, but as well as here at New Hanover County schools. So in our lobbying efforts at the General Assembly last year with the budget, we was able to get $16.8 million set aside in the line item in the state budget for the first time ever, just to increase bus driver's pay for terms of retention as well as recruiting good bus drivers. And just with that said, I think we have some bus drivers here today from New Hanover County, some already left, but a few of bus drivers from New Hanover County, if you stand up so we can recognize you. Just these three hard-working, dedicated bus drivers alone that we charge with transporting our most precious cargo every day, just with, between those three, they have over 55 years of service here at New Hanover County Schools. So what we are here to ask the Board to do is, first of all, if we could get some policies adopted county-wide that address some of the issues as far as favoritism, bus assignments, because some of the situations that happen now, even if, say, for example, you missed the day for a funeral, if it's your parent, then a lot of times you get penalized for that. You'll lose your bus, you have to go down and get owed the bus when you've been working here 20, 22 years, and get punished for something like that. It's ridiculous. As well as some of the other issues they have is retaliation at the local level. A lot of people don't know there's no set program on how they can get mid-days or extra routes. It's kind of pretty much left up to the individual at the particular bus location. So as human beings, sometime, you know, favoritism does play a role in it. So we ask that the Board adopt some policies county-wide so we know what their procedure is. The other situation we have is unfair lengthy suspensions. For example, if a bus driver or safety monitor is called in before the review board, first of all, we would like to have some representative of the bus drivers as well as some of the monitors on that board. As it stands, that board does not have a single bus driver on it. So we deal with suspensions up to 15 to 30 days without pay. As the lady, the TA spoke before I did, you know we're dealing with, you know, a certain amount of money during the month, and if, imagine you get suspended and have to go 30 days without a paycheck and come back to work. So just some of the things that we look forward to working with you guys in the upcoming school year to make sure that the hard-working, dedicated, New Hanover County Schools, classified employees are treated with dignity and respect. Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is Head Start, Mr. Schell.
As you can see by your agenda, there are several items on here. Item that we are required to talk about each month is our liaison report, which talks about the demographics, the makeup of Head Start, which is 263 four-year-olds. And I know I say this each month, but for the benefit of the audience, it's a federally-funded program that New Hanover County Schools took over. I believe this is the fifth year, and has made significant improvements to it. We've had audits, we've had a lot of input, and the school system has been recognized as doing an outstanding job. Some of the items that I think is, I don't typically like to read to you, but for the benefit of those at home, and this being the end of the year, we, school system operates on a fiscal year that ends in June, the grant runs through April, so we're really talking about the 12 months ending April 30th. And we had a number of activities that are, I think are noteworthy. Field Day was held at the end of April, 153 parents and family members attended, as well as 30 volunteers. That's a lot of support for this program, and I think that was, what jumped out at me is how well those folks came out. It included community partners, the Sheriff's Department, Fire Department, MedNorth, Smart Start, Health Department, Hammerhead Soccer Team, Nourish North Carolina, and Wilmington Early College High School. It was quite impressive. Most of the classrooms have gone on field trips to Halliburton Park, and it had a nature experience. UNCW held a creative arts fair for two of our classes. Work on Wilmington came to Johnson Pre-K to beautify the front entrance and place mulch around trees. And then from a health perspective, and what we've done for these 260 young people, 249 students have had dental exams, 268 students with some turnover have had hearing and vision exams. That's significant in these young people's lives. The next item I have for you is a monthly report, which, as I said, is the 12 months ending expenditure report. And out of a budget of $1,977,000, just short of $2 million, all but $2,000 of that was spent in appropriate expenditures. Just keep in mind that 91% of the budget is salaries and benefits. It's the people that are out there making a difference. Any questions about the expenditure report? Okay, with that, we'll move on to the next item. Item C on your agenda is the in-kind report, and that's just essentially what New Hanover County Schools spends outside of the program to support the program, such as the building, utilities, technology, maintenance. utilities, technology, maintenance, heating and air, that type of thing. And we were required to provide in the formula $494,000, and we've provided over and above that approximately $715,000 for that. That's a requirement that we report that to you. It shows the federal government and citizens that are watching that we're doing what we're supposed to do with that program. The next item that you have before you, item D, is the cost of living adjustment request. And as Ms. Smiles explained to me, there's a rare opportunity there to apply for funds to support this program, and she, working with our Finance Department diligently have done that. That's about $50,722 that has been requested. Do you need approval by this Board tonight? So, this is a grant application. So, I would ask the Board if they would approve, no guarantees we're gonna get the grant, but we need this Board that serves as fiduciary, this organization, to approve the request. And as a liaison, I'd like to make a motion that we approve, and Mr. Higgins, if we could get a second, that'd be helpful.
A second.
I have a second. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And then, the next item we have is a health and safety supplement request. I need your help, Ms. Smiles, with that, if you will.
So, we recently received information from the federal government regional foreoffice stating that there is a pot of money available to apply for a one-time request, and it needs to be prioritized with health and safety needs. So, our team quickly gathered up, received some Policy Council approval on this, and so what we have before you tonight, members, are requests to submit an application to apply for these one-time health, safety needs, one-time application. What we would like to do with that is focus on mental health needs for our staff, our children, our families, and build longevity with it and sustain our program with the trauma needs that we see every day. We do not have to submit a narrative and map those out as of yet, but tonight, we need a motion of approval so that we can put our names in the hat to at least apply for this money that is available. It's a one-time opportunity.
Do I hear a motion to approve the application?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a motion and a second. I do have a question. This is just to make an application, right?
Yes, sir.
Is there roughly an amount of money you would expect to be able to apply for?
They, they, they had a three-day deadline to at least inquire about it. They did not have a limitation of funds. We would like to shoot for the stars and aim for $450,000 to make it, to make it a quality, quality opportunity.
And there's no limit in terms of what that money could, I mean, I know it's, it's
Like, a scope of services?
Right.
Okay, health and safety needs. So, we subtop that, being health needs and mental health and equipping our teachers, staff.
So, it could be for training, it could be for staff.
Professional development, learning kicks to support that, services to support that, you know, with what's going on around in our country. It's something that we can zoom in on here with Wilmington for our little ones.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins.
Okay, I have been asked very generously to take a timeout. Generally, we do maybe five minutes. Let's do it till, I tell you what, I'm gonna be generous, five after seven. Gonna be very generous.
All right. Thank you, sir.